Always being a little free stand for the legend of allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Now, a moment of silence, please, for Dante Welton, who was a Milton fifth grader and at the age of 11 was murdered Wednesday inside a Lancaster County motel by his mother. Thank you. Please have a seat and please silence all of your cell phones.
Karlovic, Kramer, Rechner, Reese, Ister.
An executive session was held December 18, 2018 to discuss personnel matters and a special meeting was held December 20, 2018 to discuss the general obligation of the 2018. And at this time, I want to introduce Mr. Tyler Kuzar. Please come up.
All right. My name is Tyler, as Kirk just mentioned there, and I'm from Meepush, an MSP out of Lewisburg. So MSP is managed services provided we do the IT work for the city until the police department. I'm here tonight because there's a few things that the city needs to address regarding their IT, specifically around their server and the email support on the server itself. So the server hardware itself is roughly two to three years old. That's a product we did in the past. The main things that need to address at this point are the operating system is going to become end of life as of January 14, 2020. Now, end of life, what that means is Microsoft essentially, as they put out the operating systems, they determine end of life dates. And as of the end of life date, they will no longer put out any more security patches, no more updates will happen. They essentially consider it legacy software and no longer support it. There's a few concerns that happen when that end of life date comes, mainly regarding security, but also regarding functionality. So security wise, even though there aren't any new security patches that will happen for that server running the operating system, it leaves a lot of vulnerabilities for the city because any kind of vulnerability that exists in the operating system at that time will not be patched. So the bad folks out there, they were essentially are looking to exploit folks who have their own servers and or hardware, will often wait for end of life dates to have some vulnerability and then exploit that after that date has passed, knowing that there will be no additional patches that come out. The other part of this is the city current has email in-house running on Exchange 2007, which will also be end of life. So that's the major support issue. It will not work with modern versions of Outlook, which is just a email client. So there will be issues with trying to use email locally. You can get around that, but given the other vulnerabilities that will exist and the end of life for the operating system, it's highly recommended to replace that and stay secure and stay patched. So we are proposing to keep the hardware, again, as it's only roughly two to three years old. It's still functional, it's still healthy. We do monitor it on a regular basis to make sure it stays healthy. But we would need to essentially update the operating system, migrate the email to something more modern, i.e. Office 365. We have a couple of different options for that, which range in cost, and a couple of different options as far as labor, depending on what version of Office 365 would be selected. But the main thing is to get a more modern operating system to move that email to Office 365, which the main reason around that, besides the support, occasionally having to be end of life, going to 365 instead of keeping email in-house is a more modern path. It's actually more cost effective by today's standards compared to a much higher upfront cost to keep Exchange, to keep email in-house. So that's why we're recommending that path to keep the city safe, to keep it patched, to keep it on more modern infrastructure and give them good email service. The other thing that we are discussing at this time, Meepush to the City, is to update the service on the workstations and the network. So currently, we primarily manage on an ongoing basis and a recurring basis the servers. We also have management plans for workstations, which similar to keeping a device safe when it's end of life, or up to its end of life, we would provide managed antivirus, we provide patching, we provide web filtering, hardware monitoring, which compared to what is in place currently, we don't have any proactive insight into the health of the workstations, their patch status, their antivirus status. So that also leaves the city more vulnerable. With us being their MSP, they rely on us as the, you know, primary means of support for their workstations, including in addition to their servers and their network. So with those tools, we would be more effective in supporting that and definitely more secure, patched, updated, be able to practically prevent things from happening such as hardware failure. So it does add recurring costs, but it does reduce the emergencies that happen. It does reduce unknown costs. It gives us people to also help the city plan better for replacement of workstations as we're able to see how old they are, if they are healthy, and all things of that sort. So it's just a more smooth way of operating. It keeps the city more secure. It keeps them patched, updated, again, it lets us actually monitor things more on a basis.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for now?
Not workstation one. That's a per workstation price.
That's correct.
How many workstations do we have that would need that? Do we know?
We're still working on how many total stations we have.
Did I miss the type of operating system they're gonna have with this proposal?
So I believe the city already has. When we did the hardware upgrade, there was also, I believe, operating system purchase at that point, which I believe will be 2012. So that would allow us to essentially have that active through the life of the hardware. So the idea is to as much as possible kind of match them together so you don't really lose, you know, time with the operations or time with your hardware.
Will that be compatible to all the other packages, like the code enforcement package and everything they have around on the proposed changes to these operating systems?
So I believe so. We did evaluate that when we put this proposal together. So I'd have to look specifically at the different pieces of software to confirm and make sure that there are, whether there's an upgrade path for that software or whether we would have to actually, you know, maybe isolate a piece of software. The other advantage we have is we do have the servers virtualized. So it allows us to essentially upgrade more smoothly, but also if we would move to 2012 and need to actually have a different server, again, there's no need to purchase additional hardware because we can spin up an additional virtual server to run the same hardware. So we're trying to think forward a little bit that way as well. So if there is some legacy software that we would have to have, we could isolate that. We could limit its access to the internet, you know, so again, limiting the security vulnerabilities for the city.
All right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Dan.
Yes.
Anything about starting early on the first?
What's that? Oh, the project?
Yeah.
I'll take that.
I might tomorrow.
All right. I make a motion to approve the minutes and reports of December 10, 2018, December 28, 2018, January 2, 2019, and the reports of the fire department, police department, engineer, court office, and the health department. Do I have a second?
Second. Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes. Are there any audience comments on agenda items only at this time? All right. Councilman Ister? CES engineer?
Yes, we have an invoice from CES with an amount of $3,284.22 I put in a motion to pay that anyways.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Next thing is Paxton Precast for Ready Rock Wall, invoice number 3369 and 3367. Each invoice is $75,742.50. Make a motion to pay those two invoices to Paxton Precast.
A second. Is there a question?
Yes.
Is there an invoice appearing as well for 3365? Do we have to approve that? Like that separate? At least nothing else I'm going with it.
Yeah, the invoice is $22,000.
That's just the main invoice.
Sorry about that.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
At the end of last year, we were talking about updating our general code book for the city. I make a motion to accept the proposal by general code to update our ordinance book as soon as funds are available. Funds for this update were approved in our 2019 budget. This codification will create a manuscript of our code and deliver the manuscript along with an editorial and legal analysis to the city, soliciting the city's feedback on problem areas within our actual legislation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
If I go to the next one, Jolynn, you can stand quick. This is Jolynn Barner. She is our new administrative assistant in the mayor's office. So she is the employee that we hired to replace Cheryl Belsite once she left. So anytime someone needs something, you call in the office. This is Mrs. Barner, who will be answering the phone calls and helping you. All right. As everyone is aware, we have been searching for a city administrator for quite some time now. After reviewing many applications and conducting numerous interviews with different candidates, I make a motion to hire Jody Acker, who is a retired Air Force colonel, to be our city's full-time city administrator with an annual salary of $65,000 and to approve and sign the city administrator employment agreement with her. Jody Acker has the higher executive experience that our city drastically needs to implement changes and help our employees, departments, and our city's future. Do I have a second?
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Mrs. Acker, if you can introduce yourself here, if you want, please.
Well, it's me.
Oh, sorry.
Mrs. Acker is my mother. So, yes, I'm very, thank you to the council for approving my hire. I'm very excited to be here and very grateful for the opportunity. I, yes, retired as a colonel and nurse corps officer in the United States Air Force for 28 years. And some of you might wonder what is going on. What does a nurse know about city administration? Well, the last 10 years of my career, I was competitively selected for executive leadership positions, beginning with a squadron commander, which was a medical squadron. And as you reach those positions in the military, you gain a seat in the conference room with the wing commander and all of the other squadrons and groups across the base. So you begin to have exposure to civil engineering, security forces, mission support group, operations group. And so you begin to hear the issues, how those issues are addressed. And then later on, after you've gotten kind of familiar with that and you move on up, I did get selected to be a medical group commander. Now I'm part of the wing commander's staff and so actually actively engaged in solving those problems, monitoring those things. Certainly, as a medical group commander, I was involved in the budget, contracts, personnel issues. So when I saw the job description for city administrator, I thought, well, there isn't anything in there that I haven't done as a commander. And I just needed to explain myself and make that myself relevant. And so I'm very excited to be here. My first couple of months, I'm sure I'm just going to be learning so much about how the city is currently operating, getting new personnel, and then we'll see what we need to do. I'm very excited to be here and thankful for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Just like Mr. Kuzar was saying, the first section regarding the Meepush, updating, upgrading our server, I make a motion to accept Meepush's proposal for a much-needed server update as soon as funds are available. Funds for this update were approved in our 2019 budget. Our current system will be incompatible with our software by January 2020 if we do not accept the proposal. Do I have a second?
Question here. Sorry. The other thing, though, is he didn't give us a specific. He said there are options available within the Office suite that we could choose. So if we're voting on that now, are we coming back then and voting again on those Office suite choices? Or, because we wouldn't be choosing that right now, so I don't know where we'd go with that. So is the, what are we doing with that?
Right now, we're voting on, we have $15,000 set aside for the server upgrade itself. So everything that's
Part of that was the Office upgrade.
Yes.
And there was no set price on that because there was multiple options. So are we just saying we're allocating X amount of money towards server upgrades and then we'll come back with the choices of the Office for all that? Or what are we doing? Is that the motion?
Yes.
May I jump in for one second? I didn't want to put Mr. Kuzar on the spot because he's obviously knows his stuff with computers. I don't know where he is legally, though. The one question I had that I would profess to Meepush is whether they have insurance that covers our liability if there is a breach. And I don't know the, I obviously don't know the answer to that question. If they don't have such an insurance, we need to get some insurance.
We have insurance.
We do, we do.
We have a case of hostage or anything like that. Took out last, beginning of last year.
Okay, so and that includes
We went to Purdy's one year and they provided this one.
And that includes the breach that of
That includes if, you know, we get held hostage and information was lost in the coronary.
General.
That we picked up last year. We picked that up last February.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure specifically because if we're putting in new stuff, all new things, you know what I mean? But yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, you hear so many horror stories across the country.
That's what scared me.
And that's what scared us too last year.
Joel, they should have errors in emissions there. I would think they would have errors in emissions if they are
If we get that second one. If we, because we're not voting on the individual protection on all of the workstations right now.
Right, right.
Then I agree with you.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
If we vote for that, then yeah, it should be
Before we get there, we want to make sure they have errors in our emissions. That's what brought it up is when you started.
Yeah, that's like our credit card, Joel. The credit card machine, if that gets busted into, the people have the license and they hold responsible.
That's what I meant.
On the other end of the
Okay. Yes. I was just making a motion for the $15,000. Check there was about 20 decided down the road.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
With, we did this when Cheryl Belsite left.
Linda Sterling asked us to do this because of that.
All right. Linda Sterling, who's in CED Pod with us, asked us to do this because Mrs. Spake is leaving at the end of this month. So I make a motion to appoint Jolynn Barner as the certifying officer for the city's community development block grant, home program, emergency solutions grants program, and other Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, U.S. Department of Housing, and urban development funded grant programs to replace Terry Spake due to her upcoming retirement, who is currently our certifying officer. Do I have a second?
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Jolynn, did you remember all that?
These terms are expiring and they have been contacted. I wish to be reappointed for another term. I make a motion to reappoint Robert Lightol to the civil service board for a three-year term. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes. I make a motion to appoint Michael Hogan to the housing authority board for a five-year term. Do I have a second?
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
I make a motion to accept Owen Blagerman to the zoning hearing board for a three-year term. Do I have a second?
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept Jerome Alex and Rodney Jones to the planning commission for four-year terms.
Second.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
And we do, with the recent passing of our prior mayor, Jesse Woodring, we have a vacancy which expires December 31, 2019, at the end of this year. So if anybody's interested in that, the zoning hearing board, please contact my office. I make a motion to accept Norman Koch, Thomas McBrien, and David Persing to the municipal authority board for a five-year terms. And David Persing is filling in for George Groff's vacancy, which expires December 31, 2020. Do I have a second?
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept Rocky Bayer, Preston Ross, Bruce Whipple to the hard board for a four-year term.
Second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes. I make a motion to accept Darwin Clock for a four-year term to the recreational board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
I make a motion to accept David Persing, Jenna Ister Whitaker, Eric Long, Slade Schreck, and Caleb Shafford for one-year terms on the recreation board. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ister? Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Make a motion to accept David Persing and Clayton Rowell for the redevelopment authority board for five-year terms. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Make a motion to accept Gary Wolf to the board of appeals, three-year term. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
And we have three vacancies for the shade tree commission, which we still need to fill.
Excuse me, Mayor. Didn't, wasn't there someone at the meetings that began with the one that?
No one contacted my office.
That gentleman up on 12th Street.
No one officially contacted my office.
He did say it was in trouble.
For the shade tree?
Yeah.
No one, yeah, no one contacted my office about any of the wars.
Okay.
I tried to lose it.
All right. Councilwoman Kramer for the tax collector. Relieve the tax.
I would like to relieve the city treasurer from collecting the 2018 taxes. I need that to see the formal motion to release the treasurer's office from his lifetime.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
And the next step is to appoint a dominant tax collector, which would be state by tax recovery. And I don't know if I can make it all in the motion. Can I make it in the motion?
Sure.
And then deliver the linked one tax collector, the taxes from 2018.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Councilman Reese, the resignation.
Yeah, we've received a retirement notice for the department head, Mike Corner. He's going to be retiring effective January 31 of this year. We have started already seeking to fill that position. Interviews for that will start this week. So I do make the motion to accept the resignation retirement.
Second.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
And then the sale of the base lip property?
Yeah, we were contacted by the owners of the property where the mulch brush pile is currently. They are looking to sell that whole lot. That lot is much larger than what the brush pile alone is. And what we've gathered is they do have an offer for $200,000 for that. They were offering it to us as well for that. So I'm actually going to make a motion to not accept their offer and to look to relocate the brush pile to another location because I don't see it possible to pay $1,000 for that small piece that we use now.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Do we have any plans regarding where we're going to move the mulch pile?
We'll take any suggestions. My first thing is grinding up everything there. We have to get rid of everything in there as it is. So hopefully, if the weather cooperates, we're going to grind it up February, March, and start getting it down to where it's easily to move. We'll probably do a free mulch day. Earlier than we'll be typically, we'd do a free mulch day because we're going to have to get rid of it. And then there's some locations, we've thought about it, I was at the barn, and we've thought about a few different things. But we just have to make sure with the regulations, making sure we can do it. So hopefully, soon we'll have an answer, but as of right now, we'll
Councilman Rechner, the community cat?
Yeah, this is just the first reading on ordinance that Eric and, I don't know if Councilman Ister was part of it or not, was speaking with the SPCA and some other people in the community about working something where there is a catch, neuter, and return. So this will be the first reading of this ordinance. In ordinance enacting the new chapter 12, section 58 of the code of the city of Sunbury, North Carolina, Pennsylvania, and fixing an effective date whereas the council of the city of Sunbury, of Sunbury, Pennsylvania, determined that a process of trapping, sterilizing, and vaccinating for rabies, ear tipping, and returning cats to their original location is an effective and humane way to manage a population of cats within the city of Sunbury. And whereas the council has determined that the process known as the tap neuter return, or trap neuter return is the preferred approach for managing a cat population, and the trap neuter return shall be the prioritized disposition for any impounded community cats. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Sunbury, North Carolina, as follows, that a new section 20 of chapter 58 of the municipal code of Sunbury, Pennsylvania, is hereby enacted, Management of Cat Population Permitted Act. Definitions for the purposes of this section, the following terms shall have the following meanings. Community cat shall mean a free roaming cat who is cared for by one or more residents of the immediate area who is or are known or unknown. A community cat may be, may or may not be feral. Community cat caregiver shall mean a person who, in accordance with the pursuant to a policy of trap neuter and return, provides care, including food, shelter, or medical care to a community cat while not being considered the owner, harbinger, controller, or keeper of a community cat. Ear tipping shall mean the removal of a distal one-quarter of a community cat's left ear, which is approximately three-eighths of an inch or one centimeter, in an adult proportionately smaller than a kitten. This procedure is performed under sterile conditions while the cat is under anesthesia in compliance with any applicable federal or state law and under the supervision of a licensed veterinarian. Ear tips are designed to identify a community cat as being sterilized and legally vaccinated for rabies. Trap neuter return shall mean the process of humanely trapping, sterilizing, vaccinating for rabies, ear tipping, and returning community cats to their original location. Permitted acts, the following actions shall be permitted in the city of Sunbury, Pennsylvania as part of the trap, neuter, and return. Trapping for the sole purpose of sterilizing, vaccinating for rabies, and ear tipping community cats in compliance with any applicable federal or state law and under the supervision of a licensed veterinarian where applicable. An ear tipped cat, seen by the local shelters, will be returned to the location where trapped unless veterinary care is required. A trap ear tipped cat will be released on sight unless veterinary care is required. Community cat caregivers are empowered to reclaim the impounded community cats without proof of ownership solely for the personal purpose of carrying out trap neuter return and/or returning ear tipped community cats to their original locations. A person who returns a community cat to its original location while conducting, uh, trap neuter return is not deemed to have abandoned the cat. Trap neuter return shall be preferred disposition for impounded community cats. Animal control and the local shelter are authorized to encourage to conduct trap neuter return or to direct impounded community cats to a trap neuter return program. Section B, all ordinances or parts of this ordinance is in conflict therewith or hereby expressly repealed. This ordinance shall be in full force 10 days after the date of its passage. So I make a motion that we, this ordinance 656 is added to our city ordinances, uh, on the first reading. What's your new basis here? Uh, there'll be private funds. There, there, there has, there's different people throughout the community, this is Myers game, that have come about it and the SPCA is involved. And there is, there's supposed to be three, four people or organizations that will be endowed with this. City of Sunbury has no, no financial responsibilities or liabilities in this law. This is just that we, well, we acknowledge that these people are doing this with the SPCA.
So does this ordinance allow anyone to just do it or is there gonna be a committee that oversees this process?
My understanding is the SPCA is one of the guns of the SPCA and that there are, are, if there, if anybody's interested in doing, yes, we'll do that. Either be through the SPCA or a committee. Eric, am I correct in that? As far as, not just anybody can do this and take it up there, it has to be?
No, it has to be selected people. There's, there's a couple of girls that are doing it currently under one group, um, uh, associated with the cherished cats scratching post from Lewisburg. Her name's Rob Montgomery. She runs, heads the trap neuter return in the, in the county, not just our county, but multiple counties, big area, central Pennsylvania. And, uh, you know, she would train anybody to, uh, trap neuter and return and then, uh, you know, they'd be eligible to do that within our city and they would be kind of deemed a, a community cat giver, giver agent to that effect.
So if a resident has an issue, they call the code office and then the code will?
Yeah, uh, something to that effect, something hands-free, nice, simple, you know, just send an email. We can log it and send it on to whoever we have to and, uh, see if we can address the problem, um, humanely.
Chris, we've been in contact with the Danville SPCA. They would like to do 100 cats a year for us. So once this group gets together, the number of $45 to $50 per cat was brought up, but there's been multi people stepping forward to donate money towards it. I think we already have that covered for the 100 cats. So, and this group will be getting together because you have to get the cages and so forth and there is a technique and so forth. And one thing we don't wanna do is trap somebody's personal cat that happened to get out or it's in or out cat, one of those deals. But every neighborhood has furrow cats running around and then they have their kittens and so forth and so forth. So if we can get this program started in a couple of years, we should do things that are control of all the kittens running around town.
Reese.
Yes.
Eister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Councilman Rechner, this waiver of stormwater.
First, that was church block, the old Brooks building and they're tearing down approximately 10,000 square foot area. And it's gonna change that area from, uh, impervious to pervious, or permeable. So, uh, I make a motion that we accept, uh, the stormwater waiver for this to be done. It, it's gonna actually make it more environmentally friendly as far as the water runoff and stuff because, uh, the one building's coming down, it's gonna be stone. It's not gonna be concrete or anything, it's gonna be a stone floor as drainage goes.
The motion should, suggested motion should include pursuant to 140, chapter 143.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, in pursuant to 143, nine, I'm sorry.
Eister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Councilman Eister, green let go?
Yes, uh, resolution here to take and give the authorization to sign the green let go. Just to add to that, uh, we were meeting the other day at Pendale on 4th Street. Mr. Reese was there and Pendale be working with city of Sunbury on the intersection of Packer Street and also Reagan Street. They'll be coming, uh, paving this year. We don't have the data to be spring. They're gonna be doing all the crosswalks for the ADAs which will be help to us. And also they're gonna take, design those intersections. So when we receive more funding, we're gonna address those two intersections and update the, uh, traffic signals in the crosswalks. So work with Pendale's gonna be saving us some dollars.
Do we know when the R and 4th Street intersection's gonna begin?
We should let that out within the next four to six weeks while for bids.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Eister.
Yes.
Councilwoman Kramer, for refund invoices.
We have invoices for the general fund of $134,444.23 and for liquidated $21,120. I'd like to make a motion that we pay all these invoices.
Kramer.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Eister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes. Kramer, tax and celebrations.
We have two people on the list to be nominated this month for a total of $120.
Second.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Eister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Rechner, NEIC feed.
NEIC sent us a letter, uh, they changed some of their feeds on, uh, I'm not sure if anything was done on residential or not, but they did all some of the commercial stuff. And there'll be a list in the office if anybody has any interest or looking at what the changes are, but it's just, uh, it went into effect January 1st, 19, and we just got, I think it was last week or good before last week, we got a letter as to effective or change.
Second. Is that a motion?
For those of those that don't know what NEIC is, can someone please tell us?
Northeast Inspection Services. It's, uh, it's our third party inspector that does all of our electrical, all of our, the commercial, uh, anything structurally done and mechanical.
I'm officially forming a committee to help plan and organize a special citywide event to take place later this summer that Mr. Walberg commented on at our prior council meetings. The event will prioritize on bringing in investors and to invest into our city and the many properties that are available here. I'm asking for help from the public to help plan this event. I'm looking for realtors, um, investors, business people, anyone that has the background for this. And I also, I see Mr. Walberg's not here, but I'll be reaching out to him since this was his idea, which I like, to see if he can help spearhead this one. Anybody that's, um, available or wants to volunteer to help with this, please contact my office or come in. As y'all are also aware, 2022 is the 250th semi-quincennial celebration.
Pronunciation.
Practice that one. Um, we're forming a, an official committee to help plan and organize the city's 250th anniversary celebration for 2022. The point of contact will be Jolynn Barner in the mayor's office. This event is extremely special for our city and I invite the input from our residents, business owners, and different organizations as to how to celebrate the city's 250th anniversary. If you're interested in participating on this committee to plan this special event, please come to an organizational, organizational meeting that's scheduled for January 23rd at 6:00 PM in these council chambers. A letter will also be sent to different organizations.
Mr. Mayor, just add that Ochs and Ripken started. Mr. Shaffer is already getting information together, so you, you wanna get ahold of Jolynn then?
For.
It's gonna be a major undertaking. We're gonna need roughly $100,000 to put the package together. It should be a month-long celebration, falls on 4th of July, and there's a lot of, history has to be, did the research in history and so forth, so it's gonna be a major undertaking.
Caleb, are you good with meeting at January 23rd?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Caleb.
All right, um, the next regular scheduled city council meeting is January 28th at 2019, um, January 28th, 2019 at 6:15 PM in these council chambers. Is there any audience comment at this time? Please stand and approach podium.
Am I the only one?
Yeah.
Preaching a lot so, an elected Democratic Committee woman wore to, um, Mr. Mayor, Council. First, I'd like to say and goodbye to her and thank her for her services to the city. If I gave you a headache, like I said before, I apologize, but it was nothing but a headache to me.
Part of your job.
Yes, thank you very much. I wanna welcome Ms. Barner. Thank you. I'm interested, excuse me, I kinda lost my Chinatown. What did she say before?
Do you have any audience comments?
I, I lost my Chinatown here. Well, wouldn't you say thank you, everybody, and when I get back, I'll come back.
Is there any other audience comment? Please stand and approach podium, state your name for us.
My name's Dale Keller. I have an issue with the crosswalk. It's up on Market Street, close to Martin's deal, uh...
That's the market.
That's the market cross. No, it's, it's up by the high rise. Scott Tower there. It changes the south horn, or something like that. Several times I've been in the crosswalk, I've been in the middle of it. I've been this close to being run over by some car that won't stop that had the chance to stop. Not this last Friday, but a week ago, there was a young gentleman, uh, being between the ages, I'm gonna guess between 10 and 14 years old, who wanted to cross to the other side and stood there and watched traffic go and come. He didn't have a chance, so I said, uh, you need to get across Market Street, leave. But, uh, he didn't need any help, so I stepped out on the Scott Tower side. And, uh, about three or four steps out, I told him, come on. A car coming up from Fizz Street, plenty of time to stop. Didn't. The other side coming down, stopped. This guy got into the crosswalk and I yelled, "You're supposed to stop." Of course, he stops, passed, gets out, was gonna down and, excuse my language, kicked my ass. And he would've done it, right then and there. Look, you're not supposed to yell at me, you don't need to yell at me. I said, "I'm trying to get this young gentleman across the street here and I'm in the crosswalk. And you guys do have signs, state signs on either side." Needless to say, with those signs there and I'm behind these small toothpick of a guy, there's been at least a dozen times, I've been almost hit. And like I said, I was within less than two feet of being run over by cars that have a chance to stop and won't. There needs to be something done.
You're talking on Market Street?
On Market Street. I've talked to the state representative's office about this. I got a message back on my phone saying, uh, crosswalks are basically the city's problem.
City, the crosswalk's on the state road?
Yes.
Which is to be careful of signage, because I know they're going down right now and having us remove all kinds of signage or anything in there.
Right off the spaced in the middle of the street like that, you're supposed to stop, but that's what I mean with crosswalk.
So you're, what's your suggestion and what are you?
I have no idea what you guys need to do. All I know is...
You're saying that you do love the signs?
Oh, I'm just, to me, I, I, even driving, I see the signs. Those problem is, and instead of standing there shaking my head, and like I said, at least a dozen times, if not more, I've almost been hit myself. And if this guy would've gone out and, and when he got out, there was two or three other cars coming from the other side and rolled their windows down and told him he was in the wrong. And needless to say, if they wouldn't have done that, I would've been laying in the middle of Market Street.
And Mr. Keller, so you're, you are aware, um, I've received plenty of complaints, um, especially the last few weeks, and I have notified the police department to pay more attention to pedestrians in the crosswalks. And they are, um, starting to pull vehicles over if they're seeing a pedestrian in the center and they're not yielding to them. Because there is a serious issue regarding Market Street. I was actually, over the late last summer, I was actually struck by a pickup truck. He hit my hand, he was that close to me. So there is a, a large concern in our city regarding vehicles not willing to yield to our pedestrians.
They're not doing it though. There's plenty of, and, and I'm not looking for a deaf wish to step out in front of somebody. If I know somebody can't stop, I'm not gonna step out in front of them. But if I'm in the middle of Market Street where the yellow line dividing between the roads, the side road, and I'm just within less than two feet of being hit, like I said, I'm a small person, you can see me. Flopping around. There's the people that just zip on by. They're more worried about where they're going, you know? They're not paying attention. You need to do something to make the signs more visible, I guess.
And as well as looking to see if there's any, there's any solution for signs.
Brad. What, in this circumstance, what, what can the residents do if, can they call or do you have to see the vehicles not yielding or?
Here's, here's, here's the issue. Everybody knows we're down manpower wise, okay? So during the day, there's one guy on from seven to seven, anytime during the week, just one person working, okay? And evening after seven o'clock, there's usually two, two, two to two and a half or three people. Say a half, I mean, they just split the shift up. So we, we tend to have more people on at night because it's a little different. So during the day, the problem with the process is, is we have been checking crosswalks, we have, we've had grants that we've been working. I think I reported on it back in December, November. We got a big grant that we did, we, I think we issued over 135 citations, something like that, around there. You can call in, you can report it. By the time we get to it, they're gone, okay? And the other problem is, is when you, if you get the license plate number, then people don't realize, then you have to testify, you have to give us a statement, you have to testify in court. It's a long drawn out process. So most of the people are like, "Well, I don't want, I don't wanna testify." If you're willing to testify, you're willing to give us a statement, be able to positively ID the driver, then we can do something. You can, you can issue paperwork. We have actively been watching those crosswalks, uh, but it is an issue, we, we know that, but, and, uh, we're doing the best we can. And we'll continue to watch. Brad, I think a lot of residents don't know, or drivers, not residents, don't realize you have to stop, but there is a law. Possibly get with Francis and do a story on it? Basically, the law reads that if, if there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk, you have to stop.
Right.
No matter, as long as it's a clearly marked crosswalk, you have to stop. If, uh, and, and there's also a duty for the pedestrian also that if a pedestrian is on the corner, they can't just dart out or, just because they're a crosswalk, they can't just dart out. They still have to, you know, the old saying, look left, look right, look left again, okay? So you have to stop, make sure you do that also. So there are duties for the driver and the pedestrian. We've had several, so... Well, the signs are out there too.
Again, there are state approved signs, so I mean, the same signs. So I'd like to make a different sign, but as soon as it goes up, then I'll take that.
I think it's not just with the, the person who drives the vehicle, but I think it's very common, especially right after school or right before school, where kids are just like looking at your vehicle and they're seeing you come and they literally will walk out in front of your car. And as a person who lives in town, it gets a little frustrating when this happens a lot. So I think the mentality of people who are driving these vehicles that don't wanna stop have had these run-ins with kids and other adults that have just looked at your vehicle and kept walking out in front of your car. So I think to kind of help offset this issue is maybe go to the school and have them somehow teach some type of manners, even though you can walk and it's a pedestrian, have courtesy, teach them, you know, have them teach the kids some courtesy, and then maybe it might kind of back off a little too.
Just wondering, I think Wise Markets has flashing lights.
Yes, yes.
I wonder if, find out if the state would allow it, because that, that 147.
Yeah, I just have to see if, because they're gonna, they wanna do that down on, uh, 7th Street. They wanna have the, those flashing ones in down there there. Where?
They have them secondary.
They have them, okay, yeah.
We have them, we have them there, but people don't stop anyway.
People don't stop?
No, it's like, it's not for us.
Yeah, that's, basically we'd have to see what the state would allow as far as signage in there, because if we put it up and we think it's great and they don't like it, they'll just take it down.
could be down, or tell us to take them.
This will be a question of the control, what extent is the city liable if somebody gets hit there?
The issue's going to be how many, I hate to say it this way, but how many people were previously injured at that section of the street? If we are unnoticed, that that is a dangerous section of the street, which I'd say we now are unnoticed, if we weren't before, we certainly are now, then we do maintain some liability because that is an area that we can enforce the law. Because it's not like it's outside of the city limits where our officers can't travel to watch the roads, where the state police have jurisdiction. We actually have jurisdiction here, so quite honestly, there is some liability on us being notified of the problem that we can take care of, that we should take care of it. I don't know.
If we have the right signage, or the approved signage, or the, you know, police watching, and what else?
Yeah, there's not a whole lot more you can do. The one thing I was thinking is, I know that just from driving my kids to school in the morning, a lot of the places in the crosswalks, they put up those, I don't know what they're called, but they're teepee-looking signs in the, in the middle of the road. Yeah, if we can put those up, maybe on those crosswalks.
We do have them there now.
You do have them there now, and people still are slowing down.
It's like they have the state approved sign, they have the right signs.
Check with Scott Towers, they, because I know for a fact, one of my clients, Mills on Wheels client, was hit by a car and broke her leg there. If you check with Scott Towers, I think they would be the ones to tell you who got hit there.
Well, I actually.
How many?
I actually know one personally, I know someone who got hit there on a wheelchair.
Yep.
Go ahead, sir. There's one lady that lived there, she said she'd been hit twice in that crosswalk. Well, and that's what I'm saying, even without an excessive talking to those people, I believe Mr. Keller, and I know that I had a person, I actually represented a person who was hit in that crosswalk. So I can tell you for certain, the city is now unnoticed, and we're going to have to take whatever steps the state will allow us to take. The only other thing I would suggest is, if I can, I guess I'll make a suggestion to the board, the council, let me talk to Linda Culver, and see what I can, I can ascertain. She can maybe put me in top contact with the right person with the Department of Transportation, that I can get us some better answers and some better ideas.
One other thing too, this is Beth said about the school, that section, that crosswalk there at Market Street is actually a crosswalk from the Beth School.
Right.
I made them down, so, and I don't think that that's ever manned by a blind person like Sal at Tenth and Market.
Which intersection you down on?
It's right there, it's right there at the high-rise on Market Street, it's a crosswalk. But the kids that go to Beth School.
That's, you said, there's no, there's no crossing.
There's no crossing guard there, but there is one of a fence.
Well, that would be something we've been suggesting to the school district, yes.
Absolutely.
And that would also alleviate the problem during those hours for anybody from, the high-rise or anywhere else that needs to cross, if we have a crossing guard there during that period of time, that would certainly help.
There goes your tax stoplights.
What's that, oh, we don't have to pay them the school dues?
I know, that's what I'm trying to. I will mention it, look anybody.
Any other comments tonight?
I could do one comment on that. For the crosswalks that are in the middle of town, where the red lights are, you can do a pedestrian time, have the lights timed so that there's actually a pedestrian time for both the red and the red.
I think that's something we may be looking to right now, with the, with the, what we were talking about earlier that got passed, with Pendott's coming in and doing the green let go thing, we can definitely talk with them about those intersections. The problem is, and I know you know this, that the intersection, they're talking about, we don't have red lights, so there's nothing stopping.
In the past, we've had several fatalities in.
Oh, I understand, I understand, yeah, and that's definitely a good idea. I think that's something we definitely have to bring up when we meet with the D O T. Thank you.
Can I just add one more intersection? We live. Victoria Rosenkranz, and I do believe, we live right on, right off Front Street on Chestnut there, and I do believe you do have that pedestrian plastic thing, do you have that there on front in Chestnut? I'm telling you, I, I closed my eyes and eyes when I was sitting there, because the people from Riverfront are trying to cross, or just people walking their dogs or whatever. Again, I mean, I, the gentleman with his walker almost hit the dust last week, I mean, I was like grinning, so I'm going to have to get out and use my nursing skills, and I would do that. But again, I know you guys have stuff there, I'm not sure what to do, and especially with all that traffic coming through from ordering and all that stuff, but that's really bad.
If we can address it with, with Linda, that has to be a statewide issue, or else they wouldn't have created those signs to begin with, because those weren't around forever, you see those popping up, and not just our district, those signs are popping up everywhere, so they have, maybe there's a grant program that they have, or there's something, they have to increase those signs. Is there any way we can repaint some of the more dangerous crosswalks that they're talking about? Because I know the crosswalks, where they're talking about Chestnut to Riverfront are extremely faded, there's no crosswalk crossing across. Can be painted and out, right?
Who put them there? Who put them there, the city put them there?
We, from what I understand, wasn't a painted crosswalk.
Because hey, when I asked for.
And then I don't know what condition that there's on Market Street.
So I was wondering who did put them in that crosswalk set?
Are the new district?
I was told, I was told by the state when I asked for one out there, up by Wise's, walking between like the State Store and the Wise's and some of the others, people asked, and the state told me no, they couldn't put one in there because of the state highway. And then again, I see a Lewisburg out there, I just wondered, did we put them in there? The state put them in there, and the state, I think the state regulates it, what I was told. So I'm sorry, Jordan, you interrupted.
That's all right, what did you finish? The, some places I've been have made those crosswalks pumps, fairly severe pumps, and drivers wired to slow down as they approach that crosswalk. Makes it a little bit more of an emphasis that they need to pay attention in approaching those areas, so I don't know what the laws are, or what the other impact on traffic might be, but.
No, no, that's pretty much on the city road, the city road, because.
On Market in front, on the other end.
And then, I think public service announcement, maybe, you know, announcements in the paper on that, you know, this is, this is a problem, to make it public, we are a pedestrian-friendly town, and as people approach crosswalks, they need to just slow down and check for pedestrians that they could, should be stopping, not just barreling through, and not, and thinking, well, I don't want them to get ahead of me and make me have to stop, so, pedestrian priority.
That they walk the Riverfront too, that's why I said. I mean, they don't stop there.
The front of Chestnut Street, we were in a meeting somewhere, something like that. No, they didn't talk about Fourth Street either, they was as bad as no, no talk.
Is there any other, is there any other audience comment tonight?
Yes, I got my memory back. Regina Russell, I would like to apply for the zoning committee, but I never hear what qualifications are, I never see anything posted so that not only I can apply, but other people can apply. I've applied for several committees as well as boards, and I'm still trying, you know, even though the city and the mayor and everyone says that they're looking for someone to volunteer for these committees, so if you can let me know if there's some guidelines or some, some outline that tells me what the job description is.
Mike, do you have any guidance regarding some kind of qualification for the zoning board?
Common sense.
I have plenty of that, but it's not working for somebody.
I'll probably talk to him about what they do with zoning hearing.
I know, I know what's, I'm a real estate agent, so I know what zoning committees do, and like I said, I've applied for several committees in the city.
If you're interested, just write a letter of interest and bring it into the mayor's office with.
Is it going, is the letter with my qualifications going to be directed to you?
All, all the letters of interest come to me, and then I, we haven't received any, so, but they would.
I, I wrote one for Mr. Eister when he had an opening on his, and I thought you got a copy of that as well, for recreation.
I got a copy of that. Oh, yeah, we got a copy of that.
The recommendation, at least, with the, with the stuff that's happened since I've been in the office, I think the planning commission and the board will take some advice, but I gave it to them, and I asked them to review it, and asked them to select or give us, and they're all, that's, that's what I, then gave them some of my.
I never, you know, I, I understand the family and friends thing, because these people have history and they're born and raised here, but I never get to hear on what qualifications that person had, that they were elected instead of me. And I don't know if that's, it doesn't, I don't think that's mandatory, but you know, if you apply for something, you usually like to know that the person's qualifications were a lot better than yours.
I don't think there's really anything formally written up for any of the committees, because it is all volunteer service from the immunity members.
And I try, I try since twenty twelve, Mr. Mayor.
The. Like, 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 for example, I wouldn't apply for the shade tree commission, because I know nothing about shade trees. So you have to have some kind of common sense regarding the topics for each of these boards.
Or you or something.
What I was going to say is, I actually represent several zoning hearing boards, and I have, I've been in front of zoning hearing boards probably a hundred times. I think you're probably overqualified for the boards I've been on, and I mean that in a nice way. I'm saying I don't think qualifications are going to be a deal.
That, that, that's at least an answer.
Was that?
That's at least an answer.
Yeah, that's, I think, being a real estate agent, being known in the city, somebody knowing the city somewhere, you certainly would meet any, there's, number one, there are no qualifications, okay, but number two, if there were, you'd probably.
But there is usually a job description, I don't care what committee or board you own, there's a job description, because the person has to know what they're expected to do when they volunteer.
And quite honestly, again, just to try to answer that, most of the townships that I've done in don't have that, and I end up telling them, okay? If I'm the solicitor now, the, I don't know if you know this, but the solicitor for zoning boards has to be separate from the solicitor for the entities, so if I'm the solicitor here, I can't be the zoning board solicitor, they have their own solicitor.
Joe, I respect and appreciate your answer, I just have to ask the question.
No, no, no.
The question has to be asked.
No, and what I'm telling you is, that if you were on that board, whoever gets put on that board, the solicitor's going to explain to them, this is your job, this is what you do, this is how you do it, and I, I'm sorry, but I took a long way around, that's what I was trying to tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments tonight? All right, this meeting's now adjourned, thank y'all for coming up.